What we did on doing the road and now the next step is to clean this up. And I know you might have said that you heard this a few years ago in Field Services Building. I wasn't aware that that was a commitment and now we need to move forward with this in budget. Budget where, do the things that we can this year and budget where we have to. We'll be upfront of what the costs are to take down billings or do whatever and we'll move forward and get it cleaned up.
Thank you, Jim. Other comments?
Yes. I was the person who asked to have this get onto the agenda so we could have some discussion about this because actually when I drove in and around there this summer, I was shocked at how deplorable the condition was with, it was an embarrassment that this was town property and had been allowed to deteriorate to this point. There were cans around the area, I don't mean like soda cans, I mean big containers, like five, 10 gallon cans that were around. And I see that since that time, there's been some cleanup work done there and it looks much better than it did at that time. At one point, to follow up on Mark's comments about the sand and salt shed, at one point, didn't we hear something mentioned that there might be doors put on the building?
On which building?
The old salt shed.
It has doors.
It has doors.
I thought that I had, I thought that I had heard in some earlier presentation that there might be some reworking of that with the doors to make it more attractive in appearance.
It's kind of like a barn door now. It's a slide door. I mean if, if we want to look at trying to replace the doors, we can. Right now, it actually, I mean we'll take a, we'll take a better look at the actual physical structure. I didn't think that would, with all the things going onto site, the salt shed was actually probably not as good.
It's one of the best buildings going.
Is, is, is in decent shape, it might need a little work. The other two are pleasurable buildings, so the other two white ones that are there. And I couldn't believe when, and I don't, and when Mr. Nickerson went in there, when we walked in, it was a wood shop. It was, I don't think anyone's been in in two years. It's, it was, it was disappointing that it had gotten to that, but when we all asked, and I apologize and I'll take responsibility, there was a lot of, no one knew who was responsible for that building. I didn't think it was a public works building. I thought here in Parks and Rec. And Parks and Rec didn't know anything about it. It was, it was one of those things and you know what? We're trying to get it right.
Well, so I would say that, I think most of us on the board are in favor of trying to preserve buildings that we have, particularly if they've, if they're relatively sturdy. I think we probably would like to see the roof done at some point, see you come in with a proposal for that and to have it perhaps a...
You're talking of the salt shed?
Yes.
The old, the old salt.
Right. Now, moving to the two ugly buildings. Unsightly.
Instead of being challenged.
What is the, what is the condition of what used to be the old Parks and Rec office? The white building?
It's not bad. It, it definitely needs some work, not a lot. We haven't done a big assessment of it because I was trying to get this all together for the meeting here. We did almost a cursory review, but from the...
Yeah, can I just interrupt? This is the first look of something that we're going to be talking about into the CIP season, which gets finalized, you know, around budget time, which is March or... So this is just the very first look at this going forward. This isn't the plan. This is the suggestions going forward. And we, we'll all put our suggestions in.
So I'm just asking for his assessment of what the inside condition generally is like in that building.
Usable, not, not fantastic, but usable. There was some water leaking through the roof and the roof was actually fixed last year, last fall, because it got to the point where we had to do something. The children's museum had stuff in there, so we didn't want to damage that. So we, the roof has already been fixed in this building and it's in a condition that it should be fixed. The building next to it, it's, it's, there's cracks in the foundation, it's just not a good building. It should be taken down. We just don't know right now what that, what that will cost us, depending on what's in there.
The, I think I was, I know that we, years ago, did have the fire department take down some smaller buildings for training purposes and also where there was a lot of unsightly growth, they did control burns to clean up the look of the property and they're happy to do it for training purposes. I'd also like to ask you to follow up. You mentioned that water and sewer are, would like to have some use of this.
Well, they expressed an interest that they, they have, in the last budget, we added a water and sewer mechanic. Person's a fantastically talented person, has no work area in the existing O and M building. So they're looking for shop space or area where they can put all their parts. So they were actually really turning the corner where they're actually now getting parts so that if anything goes wrong, instead of running around and reacting and paying a lot more when something breaks. So they need shop space and this was an area they identified. That doesn't mean they're going to use that, I understand that. I'm just, there's a need right now for space and they're up there.
Sounds like a good, a good alternative use of it, of the property. Good thinking. Okay, I think that's all of my questions. Thank you for the presentation this evening. And as I said, I was pleased to drive by there recently and see that there had been some cleanup done and it's not nearly as unsightly as it was.
This is a to be continued conversation. As we investigate more, we can report back to the board.
Awesome.
I think I, I reported last time after you brought it up, I was in, I had already been there with I think five or seven department heads and we walked the property down below and up top and, and Joe spearheaded that and Parks and Rec was there and Water and Sewer and everybody was there that had, that have, all the stakeholders of that particular property. And it was deplorable. It was an embarrassment. There, it is the second Eastline landfill. I mean it's, there's things back there and nobody knows, nobody knows who owns this trailer and, and that pile of whatever. It, it's, we have a long way to go, but I think these little baby steps will even make a big difference. You noticed that we've done some cleanup on the property, but putting it into the capital plan next year to tear down the building, to beautify a building and to shore up the, the old salt shed for some cold storage would be a nice start. The green space that you have outlined on this aerial view is a great start. And, and that neighborhood is going to be pleased, I'm sure, Magna Road residents and everybody that drives by. All we need to do is show a sense of pride. And what I discovered in walking with the department heads is nobody had any ownership of that particular property because, you know, Parks and Rec's over here and we're renting some space to the, no offense, to the children's museum over here and nobody really knows what that other shop and who owns that one. And, and so I, I think as we move forward, I'm going to assign departments to have ownership of the properties. Because I know when you go up top and you go to the O and M building, which is controlled, run, it is the water and sewer department, this pride. You drive up and you can see that there's pride. They cut the grass there, the parking lot's neat. You go into the shop and all of, everything is, is on shelves and in order. There's pride in there, in their workmanship. And the same can be true for Eight Capital Drive. And down below here, nobody really has any ownership because we're all using it and we're all, it's dumping ground as you've described. So when we assign, you know, maybe this side of the, the property, Parks and Rec have to maintain it and are responsible for it. And if anything gets dumped there, it's on them. And then maybe this, the cold storage will be public works, who knows? They'll, I think we'll be building in that pride, we'll be building in that maintenance and we'll be building in just a natural beautification of the property. Because that's basically the kind of departments we have in town everywhere else. So, more on that, we'll see where that goes. Any other questions?
Did, up above at, at 12, how many garbage cans are stored in the woods?
A lot, a lot.
A load. So, when we talk about, we don't have places to put things, all they did was push a road, cut trees, push a road up onto property that we own and put, at the time, a thousand cans up there. I mean, talk about, eh, it's, we own them, we pay good money for them. They're secondary cans and when somebody's brakes or somebody needs a new one, they purchase them. But, you know, they're, just leaves all over them and, you know, you gotta go dig one out in the middle of winter because it's located in the middle of the woods. So, when you talk about not having enough area, just the, the old town garage, if you will, the old building, I, I can count off the top of my head eight different departments that have vehicles in there, things that have motors that get stored in there. And then when it comes to winter, everyone and their brother is looking for a piece of the action in there because there is no place to put anything from skadoos, you know, the police department, all their, all their stuff that they have, all of the ATV stuff are, all go in there.
The beach rakes.
Area four communications, the whole eastern communications truck is in there, that state truck that Town of Eastline houses is in there. Just a load of, of very important things that can't be out in the weather. They used to be out in the weather, let me put it that way. They used to be out in the weather and this has saved them, at least for that. So the, I would tell you that the salt shed would come in very, very handy for even something as mundane as the, as the surf rakes that sit outside all year round in the summer, but in the winter, instead of them freezing solid and, and all of that and they have to go in and refurb them every spring, they could be in there. Things of that nature that just sit outside. So, having done all of that, and the other question is, in the building that you want to take down, the, the old...
Bus depot.
Yeah, it was a wood shop, there was, sign shop was in there.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. And, and the bus. The, the one with the sliding door was the water departments where they kept all of their valves and things like that in there. The water department's still using that because there is no, in the room is, it's hard to find room to put stuff like that. So, there's a real need for, for storage, just bulk storage that, things that you, you gotta get to when you need them, but otherwise they can't be outside. So, I would just say that anything that we could do with, you know, putting shingles on and roofs on and things like that are, are minor to, to keep things like this up and running. So, just food for thought in the future when you deal with that in a capital improvement plan.
I have one last thing and it would be, it would be quick, but everything's a domino effect with the stuff we're doing at Field Services Building and all the stuff we're doing there because the sand pile gets brought over there. If you've ever been up at the transfer station on the left, we have all these other piles of process, all that's going to Field Services Building, that's going to open up space. Right now, we, we have to keep a bay open in the winter for the loader to load up the trucks. That's going to Field Services Building, so that's a whole new bay that's going to be... So, everything by bringing it to Field Services Building is going to be able to clean up a lot of the things that are on this end of town. It's just that right now, we've had this other lot and it's the next thing on the agenda that's just sitting there and if it's utilized properly, a lot of that stuff gets out of people's sight because it's going to be over on Capital Drive. So that's a segue to hopefully next.
Excellent.
Perfect. Joe, thanks for the update and the initial discussion on this and appreciate all the work you've done to help us with this. I announced earlier that Eastline is currently out to bid, construct a new salt shed. We're going to combine some lots. Bill, you want to talk about it?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bill Shear, Deputy Director of Public Works. The print you have in front of you is the same thing that's over here on the easel, but that for the public, et cetera. We're in the, we currently are out to bid for the new salt dome at the Field Services Building to, not necessarily replace, but to move the salt over to the Field Services Building. Our current salt shed only holds 1,100 tons of salt, which is not enough. I'm sure you're familiar with the salt shortages we've had over the last couple of years with these bad winters. The new salt dome will hold approximately 3,000 tons of salt, which is basically a year of salt, so we won't have to deal with these shortage issues anymore. If you can see, that's, that's the proposed salt dome. This is the existing Field Services Building. Actually, the bids are due tomorrow, so I'll know how much the, because our goal is to get the salt shed completed in November so that we can load it with salt and be using it for the winter. Also, we plan on moving our main fuel, fueling facility to the Field Services Building where all our, most of our vehicles are housed and most of our staff are located. Now, I, we also have to go to zoning tomorrow night. That is our main reason for being here. Currently, there are three lots out there. The existing Field Services Building is on one lot and if you see the blue lines that are on this picture here, I believe they're red on your handout, this is a second lot and that's a third lot. Now, to comply with zoning, we, we would have issues with buffers and setbacks, keeping these lot lines in amongst our, what we're trying to do. We're basically using this as one big lot. So, for the advice of the zoning official and council, we would like to combine these three lots into one. So we're here to get a resolution from the Board of Selectment to allow Mark Nickerson to sign the appropriate documents to combine these three lots into one. I can answer any more detailed questions on that, but really it's just to combine the three lots.
Motion and then we can ask questions?
Okay. Whereas the town is the owner of real property known as Six Capital Drive, Eight Capital Drive and 11 Colton Road, which are currently individual parcels. Whereas the combining of the three parcels into a single parcel of land will facilitate the development of the intended use. It is resolved that the Eastline Board of Selectment hereby authorizes the first selectmen to execute deeds and related documents in order to combine Six Capital Drive, Eight Capital Drive and 11 Colton Road into a single parcel of land.
Second. My motion has been seconded. Any comments, questions? It's pretty straightforward, folks, what we're trying to do and we're moving it to zoning for them to sign off on this as well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
See, you thought this would be a long meeting.
I really did.
Well, it is, as a matter of fact. Great. Two F dash one on our agenda tonight is discussion. Discussion about some issues that, well, it's been taking a couple of years and there's no resolution in sight, so I took it upon myself to try to take a leadership position here and make a decision. Here's the deal. I know that's why most of you folks are here tonight and, and I'll take the hit. We, we bought a building called the Samuel Smith House on Plains Dam Road and we got a grant from the state. And that grant states that the town is responsible for the upkeep and moving that property to museum quality, if you will, to the, the place where it's a showpiece, that we maintain the property, that we bring it back to its natural state, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not quoting obviously from anything. And I, and I speak in general terms. We have a group that's very dedicated and said, when we voted two years ago to take this on, this, they said, we'll have the town's back. We have the plumber, we have the electrician, we have the woodsmith, we have people who can lift things and get on roofs and chop wood and all that and, and they still do. But they've come across a slow process of fundraising and building an endowment and they're very, very hopeful. I can't tell, you all know these people, we live with them, they're our neighbors. They're, they're dedicated and they, in their soul, they, they believe in this and in their heart. But what we have is a situation where they want money. And this is the second time I've been requested, and in your packs tonight, you have a, a letter from Marvin Schott, who signed it, who is not a commission member because we don't have a commission yet and not a leasee gives us no lease. But this is the second time we've been asked to spend $8,000. The Board of Finance also had a request to accept $8,000. But of course, we don't have a line item for this in our budget because the group had pledged that they wouldn't require town money at the time when we bought this building and that was probably the tipping point why we ended up buying this building to begin So now we have a situation where we don't really, I mean, this is an organized group, don't get me wrong, but they're not a town group, they're not a town recognized group, they're not a, they're not a commission. The Samuel Smith House, there is a historic properties house, I get that. But there's no line item and we, we don't have anyone watching out for the town's interest. The town's interest, which we're being reminded, has an interest in this because we're responsible. We're responsible. This Board of Selectment is responsible because we own it. We are, you know, we're the, we're the people who are responsible here of the upkeep of town buildings and properties. And I, I have watched from the deputy chair and now for the last nine months, the go-around between, are we doing a lease, are we doing a commission, are we doing a lease? And we got to a point where we're almost at a lease and now we're going to start the lease stuff all over again. We're going to look at different leases in different parts of the state. But meanwhile, if we have a commission, this commission is part of the town government, it's covered by insurance, the people are working on behalf of the town. And, you know, if this, if this group can't fundraise and come up with money to maintain this house and the, and the town does have to pony up, because ultimately if these folks don't, we have to, then it should go to a, a town commission, not a group of citizens because what if? What if, what if, what if? That's where I'm at. So, you know, I, again, I have a request, I got a request, now you have the request in front of you for $8,000 of various things, which we would agree or not agree that is necessary and needed in an emergency.
We don't...
Do you not have, did you not get your folders tonight?
We didn't get packaged.
No.
Hey Dar, I have one, but it's not theirs. I apologize.
So do I.
That's what's missing. Okay. Well, you'll see that.
We're, we're looking at you with, what are you doing?
You were very polite in not interrupting Rob. I appreciate that. But you must, yeah, you're looking at me going, oh, he's lost it again.
Okay, we'll pass him down.
And, and, and not something, I mean, that proposal was going to be on the next agenda, but in the meantime, I'm feeling like something needs to be done. And again, I've said it about four or five of these meetings where we talk a lot, but we don't get anything done. I'm trying to find a way to get things done. One way to do it, even though we bought this house, we said no commission. We don't want to grow government. And we don't want to grow a budget either. But we're at a place that if it's, if we're being called on the carpet and it's the town's responsibility because of this grant, that we should take control of it. So it's one or the other. I'll take some hits on that. I am, I am thankful for the dedication of people like yourselves, like the people in our audience tonight, that step up and do things like this. It makes, it makes Eastline have a heart and soul and it gives us a personality as a town that other towns just don't have. They just don't have it and we do. And that's the it. But we need to do something here. I, I can't, I'm not one to kick the cans down the road and I'm not one to sit at tables and have a meeting for the sake of having a meeting. I, we should decide at some point to have a commission and suck it up and realize that this is going to be in our, in our budget because we have now an asset that needs to be protected. Or, or say, you know what, be the leasees, go out and get your insurance and liability, go out and get your director's insurance and start earning money because you're now caretakers of the property. It's one or the other.
I have no doubt of the intent and the hard work that everyone's put in on this commission or on this group to try and meet the requirements and so forth like that. But the ultimate thing is it comes down to, it's a town resource right now. The town owns it and we have to ensure that it's maintained. If that's going to be the case, if we're going to be asked to provide funding for this, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that there is some type of an organization that responds or reports to the Board of Selectment. I know that, you know, some of the people on the, on the friends of the Samuel Smith House may not like that, but if we're going to be expected to have to maintain, provide resources, it's something, I think it's a necessary evil at this point. Maybe we could, someone could sit down with them, we could sit and talk, what are their concerns? I know there's some fundraising areas that are, you know, everybody tries to fundraise now. Everyone, you know, there's just so many people trying to get donations for various things. It's a great resource. And I think when we purchased this, I know there was a commitment that they weren't going to ask for any money, but, and I honestly believe that there was no doubt in my mind that that's what they firmly meant. But if it's going to get to the point where we have to contribute on a regular basis to maintain it, I think it's incumbent upon the town to have some type of, of guidance and authority over the, how things are done at the place through a commission. But that's something that, you know, I don't know, I think we have to decide that tonight. I think this would be a great time to, for first discussion, to see what we can do to help them and then move forward from that and framework some type of an organization that probably meets with everybody's agreement. But it's a great piece of property. It's helped, the Sportsman Club helped it so we could purchase it, so, you know, it's, it's a town asset and we're ultimately going to have to take care of it. That's all.
Ms. Anne?
I noticed the line in the letter and from the friends and I think that this is the first time that any of us have seen this letter, this is the first time I've seen it. But it caught my attention, the par, the third or the second paragraph down, the paragraph beginning with, "At a meeting between..." First like when, and it continues on to the next to the last line, "In two years, no preservation work has been accomplished." I thought that there had been work done on the roof and that there had been...
I, yeah, I think that's a misstatement. I, I, I know that work has been done. I know that, that people have taken money out of their own pockets in this group and done work. I don't, you know, declared, I don't know if it's preservation work or maintenance work and then maybe that's what this statement means. And again, if we intend to go further in discussion beyond tonight, we'll have public hearings, we'll have opportunities for, for people to speak and give presentations. But yes, I, I know that the work has been done on that, so...
All right. So, there is, there has not been a lease signed.
Correct.
And if we go the route of leasing them the property, they are responsible for all the expenses, they have to pay their own insurance.
Correct.
And essentially, they become the caretakers of the property under the lease.
Correct. That's how I see it. I mean, this commission can decide differently. I don't know of any other relationship in town that we have where we lease property and then pay for the lease. Like we become the lease. I don't know. No, I...
Well, we have, I think we have some groups where we provide some insurance coverage for them and include them under our policy.
We would, we would still be insuring the house because it is a town property. But they, they would have a responsibility as a leasee, as the caretakers of the property. If someone trips and falls, you know, basically the lawyers sue both parties, you know, they'll sue the town, they'll sue the leasee. And, yeah, they would, you know, certainly need to be, if they were having an event on their, on the property that they're leasing, they would need to have that kind of coverage. Yes, our insurance would cover the property itself and also have an underlying or overlaying liability policy.
Well, the, we have the, the concept of the commission. The board also has the ability to create an ad hoc committee under our provisions and appoint people to that ad hoc committee, which, translation of Latin means for the time being, it's not a permanent commission. But if we did, if we did that, then that would give us time to consider the ramifications of a commission. We would, we've had ad hoc committees in the past for various purposes, particularly Charter Revision Commission, our celebration of the 150th birthday of the town. Those two things come to my mind now and the board appointed members to those committees and I assume then that we had the responsi, they reported to us. So I would assume that that would mean that they were, that they were covered by any occurrences that happened. That could be a short-term solution. They would be acting under the board's authority as we appointed them, but I think that we would want some advice from town council on that. That's a possible interim solution.
I, you know, I... You know, I tip my hat to you, Roseanne, because that also, this group has stated that, you know, they're working toward this endowment thing to getting the flow of grants and maybe even some endowment money. So, you know, they're looking to become independent in the future. But that might be the, that might be the solution. Mr. O'Connell, you're sitting there so quietly. Are you, yeah, okay. I don't know if you painted your eyes to be awake and you're, okay, you're awake. Thoughts about ad hoc? Are you familiar enough with it to speak on it tonight?
Well, I know that, I know that the Charter, I always look to the Charter first.
Right.
And the Charter allows the Board of Selectment by ordinance, which means after a public hearing, to create boards and commissions and specify their powers and duties. So you can create a new board and a new commission, which would be an agency of the town and have a budget in whatever amount you wanted to assign to that and would be responsible for whatever purview you granted to them. An ad hoc committee usually does not have any money. Does, does not, is not required to perform any duties. It usually is created to advise the Board of Selectment regarding a pending issue or an issue that needs some research. What comes to mind in my experience is many years ago, we had a water commission. And it came time to see whether or not there would be a sewer system in town. And the Board of Selectmen appointed a sewer study committee. And they spent a couple of years. So the ad hoc committee can last for a while. And then they made a report to the Board of Selectmen. And eventually, when it was decided to have a sewer system, several members of that ad hoc committee were added to the water commission and became the nine-member water and sewer commission. So there is precedent for that type of activity. But it is a very limited group of, a very limited charge that an ad hoc committee does. And it usually doesn't have any money to spend and usually is advisory and usually does not bind the town.
Now, the previous examples that I gave, the Board of Selectmen gave those groups a budget to work with. We gave them money to work with.
Well, if you would ask me, it might have been different.
Well, I believe we did for the Charter Revision Commission and, or the one hundred and fifty. We gave them, we gave them money to work with, to carry out their duties, and we gave them a specific charge.
Yes, the Charter Revision Commission is a statutorily defined commission created by the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the statutes. That's not an ad hoc committee. That is a committee whose, whose powers and duties are defined by the general statutes. So that wouldn't be an ad hoc committee.
Ed, with an ad hoc committee, though, they could get funds just to carry out their jobs. Not so much a budget to do repair work and stuff like that, though, correct? If you formed an ad hoc committee that they needed to go out and, and research something and there was a cost involved in doing the research and stuff like that.
Well, that would usually, that would usually be borne by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Not by the, not by a budget assigned to the committee.
But there wouldn't be a budget assigned to that ad hoc.